Mrs. Nita Collier could not be here to let her have a statement to read to you from her. My name is Nita Collier. I am seeking reelection to the Madison County School Board. I am a native of Madison County, resident who loves our amazing communities. I have a passion for loving children and supporting their passion of learning. I believe in public education and believe that all children should have access to a high-quality education. I am a parent advocate, teacher advocate, and child advocate. I think that all decisions need to be made with a focus on what is best for the children first. I have had a career in education for 20-plus years, starting out as a preschool teacher in the 90s, spent time working for the Department of Correctional Education. My current position is the manager for enterprise applications and communications with Albemarle County Public Schools. I am a member of Bethel Baptist Church in Revo, Virginia. I am an active 4-H leader and volunteer. I am a mom to Ryan and Hunter and a wife to Scott. I apologize that I can't be in attendance this evening. We booked a beach vacation over six months ago and I am enjoying being with my family at Hatters Island in North Carolina. I encourage you to reach out to me via email at thecolliercrew5@gmail.com or by phone (540) 718-3207. With any questions, I have an open door. I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Nita Collier. Okay, the drawing for Charlie Sheed is first, Nisha Jones is second, and Chris Wingate is third. First question, oh, excuse me, you've got to do your opening statement. Let's start with Charlie Sheed.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Charlie Sheed. I grew up in Rixeville, Virginia on a farm. Met my wife about 22 years ago and leaked at the opportunity to come to Madison County.
Speak up, Charlie.
Can you hear me now? I grew up in Rixeville, Virginia on a farm. I met my wife about 22 years ago and I leaked at the opportunity to come to Madison. I love this county and I love the people of this county. COVID-19 brought us many challenges, but it also showed us what our children are learning in school. And it has upset many people, including myself. It is my intent to get the school back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic. And of course, we add history into that because without knowing our history, we will repeat all the mistakes that we've made thus far.
Nisha Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is, sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Nisha Jones and I'm running for Madison County School Board. I would, can you not hear me? Is that better? Is that better? Is that better? Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, sorry. My husband and Bri, my husband Brian is a native of Madison County. I'm a registered nurse, I'm an Army veteran, and I'm a mother of two children in the Madison County school system. I'm not running as a nurse, I'm running as a parent. I'm running as a parent who wants to advocate for our teachers and our students to be successful in whatever they choose to do once they leave the Madison County school district. I think it's important that we teach our kids how critical thinking, not what to think, but how to think, along with problem solving and teamwork. Most importantly, I want all of our schools and our educators to know that we care about them and we believe in their abilities and special talents and we celebrate all of their successes.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Christopher Wingate and I'm running for the school board. And I welcome the opportunity tonight to tell you a little bit why I'm running and I wrote about myself. First, I want to thank my wife Bethany for asking that question to me a lot, "Why are you running?" I have five children, ages 14, 11, 6, 3, and 5 months. And so on nights like tonight when I'm not home with her helping out, then she asks me that question a lot. So I thank her, thank Bethany for giving the rehearsal and also for allowing to let me do this. So why am I running? The real reason is that I love Madison County. And I am a product of Madison County. I graduated from Madison County High School in 1993. And then I left and went on to the Army for about 25 years and retired two years ago. And I always knew when I was in the Army I wanted to come back to Madison. Madison is a special place, I think. There are a lot of special things on Madison County. And I want to run to preserve that specialness about Madison County. I think some of the experiences I had in the military and my life have positioned me to have a firm foundation. I've managed and led and been part of organizations and staffs and projects over the 25 years in challenging times and challenging places. And I've learned about leadership and followership and working in teamwork and discipline and hard work and where those things can get you. And I think I can bring that to the school board. And I really love this opportunity to serve this county, this special place, as I have opened after serving my country the last 25 years.
Question number one. Schools make up the majority of the county's budget. How would you ensure that the school system spends its money appropriately? Nisha Jones.
Can you hear me? The school board has the opportunity to review and weigh in on the budget and this is an important responsibility of the school board. The school board has also done a great job filling out applications for grants and they just received a huge grant that will benefit our family and the community. It's important that the school board works closely with the board of supervisors to work against the unfunded mandates from the state to reduce the burden on the local community. The school board also has the opportunity to speak with our local and our state representatives to discuss our budget and our funding.
Chris Wingate.
So one of my, one of the real reasons why I'm running is I want to, I want to be a listening school board. And I think the school board has done that in the past and in many ways. And I want to continue that and build on that to hear parents' concerns and ideas. I think my number-one principle is listen to parents, listen to parents, listen to parents more than to politicians and bureaucrats from Richmond and Washington. I think if we do that, it influences the budget. I think it helps us to prioritize what's most important, as we listen to parents and what maybe is not so important. And so I promise I will always do that first, just listen to parents and seek what's important for them in terms of funding and go from there. I think we all be skeptical of those unfunded mandates and those ideas that are coming from Richmond and Washington. There are a lot of crazy ideas out there that are coming from them and the Madisonians know better than those folks. But it's good for their children.
Charlie Sheed.
So let's point out a couple of actual mandates that the state is pushing down our throats like CRT, transgender rights and whatnot. And I understand these are all issues. But it doesn't make sense that large cities tell these small communities what to do, not to me. When it comes to money spent in this county, obviously it's taxpayer money, I pay taxes, everyone pays taxes. We want to see it spent the best way possible for the school. Actually, with a large budget, so that's, we want to spend well. Not everything that gets told to us to do doesn't mean that it's being spent well. As you all know, when it comes to budgets, there are entities like to spend money and they have a large amount of money. And if they don't spend that money, they think that they're not going to get that money next year. So what does the state do? The state mandates these things so that we can spend more money, spend more money. And like Jim Jewett mentioned, there's no correlation between spending money in schools and the actual education outcome of the children. That really comes down to the teachers and their abilities and the good job that they do.
Do you have children and are they enrolled in the Madison County Public School System? Chris Wingate.
I do have five children and we homeschool our children. It's kind of a question I get asked a lot about why I'm doing this. And so we homeschool because it's worked for us. I've moved nine times in the military over 14 years around the country and around the world and that continuity worked for my family. We also wanted to provide religious values to our children and so we homeschool. And we're blessed in that way. You know, my wife doesn't work outside the home, so we're truly blessed in that way. I know other parents are not, are not able to do that. And I want all students, homeschool, public, private, to have a fantastic education. And that's why I'm running for this. You know, some people say, "Well, you're homeschooling children." And it's true, but I care about Madison. I care about the students in Madison. I realize that those children are going to go to public schools, which can be a wonderful thing. And so I want to make it the most wonderful possible thing for those children that are going to lead our county and lead our state and lead our country in the future.
Charlie Sheed.
Would you mind repeating that whole question?
Sure, no problem. Do you have children and are they enrolled in the Madison County Public School System?
Yes. I am a proud father of four children. My oldest is in college right now. The next three, 14, 7, and a four-year-old, a three-year-old, sorry, my bad. My children are homeschooled as well. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit, that was the best thing for us to do, to homeschool. And with the mandates being passed down from Northam, that is still the best thing for our family to do. And until things change, it will continue to be the best thing for our children to do.
Nisha Jones.
Yes, I have three daughters. I have one who's a college graduate who graduated during COVID a year early from college. And I have two daughters in the Madison County School District. One has done a sixth grade and one has done a tenth grade.
What level of education do you have and do you think that qualifies you to be on the school board? Charlie Sheed.
My level of education is I've just barely passed high school. And the more I got out of there. As far as qualifications, I really don't know if I have any qualifications other than the fact that if I tell you something, it's what I believe and it's what I thought out and there's a lot of truth behind it.
Nisha Jones.
I have a bachelor's degree from Liberty University. I'm currently working on my master's degree from Western Governors University in management and leadership. Do I think my educational background, yes, I do. I think it will help when it comes to understanding the structure, the processes that we need to take in order to get great outcomes from our students. But most importantly, I can think outside of my education and put my children and all the children in the school district first.
Chris Wingate.
In the Army, I was blessed to have a chance to get a couple of masters, a master's from George Mason in history and a master's in leadership from the Army. But to be honest, what Charlie said is much more important. I mean, the idea of common sense, there are a lot of foolish people with lots and lots and lots of degrees. And so I really believe that the idea of common sense, loving Madison, listening to parents, putting parents first is much more important than those educational degrees. Some of it certainly can help, but I think my experience as a father, as a husband, living in Madison County, loving Madison County, being involved in the county and things I've learned in the military position me to be on the school board and provide a firm foundation.
Have you read the duties and responsibilities of a school board member? If so, which do you consider most important? Nisha Jones.
I have read the duties. What I consider most important is to listen to the parents and the citizens and the community. But when I take the oath, if elected, then I have to listen to that oath. But the voices of the community members are important to me and there's a process that we as a community can take if we don't agree with the mandates that are coming down through Richmond. We can go to the Virginia Association of School Board together as a team and say, "What you're asking us to do does not fit our kids in Madison County. We need to reconsider this."
Charlie Sheed.
Sure, our answer is no.
Chris Wingate.
I have read them. I think the most important thing is being in partnership with parents. I think parents are the primary educators of their children and I think the schools need to support the parents to the best possible degree we can. And I think Madison's a special place in many ways. I think there are fantastic teachers and administrators, people who are really important members who are doing that. But there are tentacles coming from Richmond and Washington that are really dangerous. And so we have to be on guard against that, against those things. And so that's so critical, I think, in not duties, is to be on the parent's side and not on the side of politicians and bureaucrats.
We want our children to be safe and feel safe at school. How do you propose the school board can help ensure safety in the schools? Chris Wingate.
I think that's a question I probably should talk to, talk to, how things have been done now first before making a decision. And the idea of listening to the school members, to the principals, to administrators, to teachers on how to do that. I think one of the beautiful things about Madison County is that people are neighbors in Madison. You know, I really, honestly, I've traveled a whole lot in 25 years in the military and seen a lot of different places. And Madison is a special place in terms of people looking out for one another. I think that goes a long way towards protecting folks from people who need special help who might be a danger to themselves and to the community. And so I think we reinforce that. We partner with law, with Madison's law enforcement to make sure that our schools are safe. Crazy, Albemarle County just got rid of school resource officers in the schools because they felt that it was too threatening or some of the kind of crazy liberal idea. That's insane, I think. And it shares partners, it's our partner and our help. We ought to view them as such.
Charlie Sheed.
Isn't it a shame that we actually have to have safety officers in school for our children to keep them safe? And the question is, why would we have to do that? We have to do that because we've taken the greatest protector that we have out of schools and that's God himself. We're going to remove the entity that created us and take all the goodness of that away. How can kids even know that they are valuable? How can they know that they have purpose? It's a shame.
Nisha Jones.
There are so many different things that make our kids unsafe in schools. We need to work on our insibility and our bullying that are happening in schools. That's one big issue that's making our kids feel unsafe in schools. So my daughter in high school, bless her, she's everything you read about a second child. But because she trusts her teachers and she trusts the administration and she trusted her resource officer, when she has struggles, she knows that she can go to them and she knows that they will handle it. If I have concerns about my children's safety and I contact someone at the school, I know that someone's going to call me back. That's how we continue to make our kids safe, by knowing that they can trust the folks that are in the school that's there.
As a school board member, are you prepared to support all students regardless of race, gender, sexuality, disability, or English language learner, or gender identity? Charlie Sheed.
Yes, but I am not prepared. I am not prepared to appease one group over another. It's a learning institution, it's a school. The sexualization part of it needs to be left out of school, period.
Nisha Jones.
Absolutely. Our kids are our future and that's how they should be treated. It's not up to me to judge them for their beliefs. It's up to me to support them to make sure they're successful in their education while they're in Madison County schools.
Chris Wingate.
I think when faced with a question like this, I think many people in Madison, it's only true for me. I think when faced with questions like this, your faith is a fundamental thing you look at and for me, it's strongly true. So I'd say two things are true for me about this question. Number one, my faith teaches me to treat every single person with dignity as a creation of God. And so absolutely yes to treating them with respect. However, there are ideas, new ideas out there that are incompatible with my understanding of Christian faith. I was a teacher at Albemarle County High School Public Schools until two weeks ago. I resigned because they were asking me to affirm the transgender policy that I cannot do as a Christian and so I no longer am employed by them. So as a Christian, religious person, I have a right for that, to do that. And I think our school should have that now. I know there are other people with different ideas. That's fine. It's what America is about. But we ought to have the ability to say, "This is my faith. This is what I stand for."
What is your stance on culturally responsive teaching? Nisha Jones.
Critical race theory is taught at a collegiate level. It's not taught in K through 12 and that's where it should stay. I support the current curriculum at Madison County and I think we do an excellent job teaching our children the history of this country. I think it's important that we teach our kids literature and the history that affect our present. This will help them be better citizens. This will help them understand why we are today. It's important that we don't send our kids out in the world prepared, right? Not all kids are really going to stay here in Madison County. They want to go out into the world. So we want to teach them this in a safe place so they don't have to go out in the world and learn it on their own.
Chris Wingate.
I think the idea of critical race theory, that's just kind of a code word for a lot of new ideas that are out there that are divisive and insane in many ways and bad for our community and bad for our students. I saw a poll the other day that said 30% of young Americans are very proud of their country. 30% of young Americans are proud of their country. That's crazy. That's crazy. Our schools have to teach our children to love our country. There's absolutely things that we can talk about, should talk about, teach them fullness of history. Americans have made big mistakes. You know, we're all sinners in the hands of God. And big mistakes should be taught, but ultimately, I believe that America is about the pursuit of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. America has been one of the greatest forces for good and liberty in the history of the world. I think our children have to know that.
Charlie Sheed.
It is racist to tell any child of any color that they are oppressive over someone else or that they are a victim because of someone else. They are sponges and can accomplish anything they put their minds to. CRT focuses on color. Martin Luther King Jr. was absolutely against focusing on color. And here we are trying to drive it into schools. That is wrong.
What is equity education? Chris Wingate.
It's a bad idea. So I've seen this, I've seen it at Albemarle County Public Schools and it is a camel's nose under the tent. It sounds good. There are a lot of good ideals and I think that well-meaning people have about it, for sure. And every single person should be treated with absolute, absolute ability to excel and strive for excellence. But the idea behind much of equity things, task force and things like that is that America is about oppression and racism and that's not what America is about. There are absolutely instances of that in America. The idea that you can push in many cases by equity, task force and things says that America is all about oppression and it's just not fair to our children to teach them that. It's divisive and it's poisonous to them becoming American citizens.
Charlie Sheed.
I graduated in 1995. If they taught equity education in 1995, I would have ended up in the top of my class. And the folks that were in the top of my class would have been mediocre. And what a shame that is. Those that can excel, let them excel. And those that need help, let's help. Equity education is putting everybody, making them even and saying that you can't go higher because you're running ahead of this guy. You gotta keep going together. And that's not the case. This country is founded on people doing extraordinary things. Sometimes otherwise capable of doing extraordinary things. But there are many children that can. We need to push those that can, help them out.
Nisha Jones.
Equity education, providing education to all students regardless of what level they're at and making sure that all students have what they need to be successful. So if I have a kid that's in advanced classes, making sure that that kid has what she needs to excel, to succeed in her advanced class. If I have a kid that needs help with reading, making sure that that child has the resources that they need so they can be successful in learning how to read. That's what I feel is for education.
There are cameras on school buses. Should classrooms have cameras? Why or why not explain, Charlie Sheed?
I'll love listening. Yes, classrooms should absolutely have cameras and they should be at the back of the class facing front so that we know who are on the front of these kids all day, every day.
Nisha Jones, excuse me, Nisha, I'm so sorry.
Should cameras be in classrooms? For safety reasons, yes. It also can help parents know what their kids are doing during the day. Our kids come home and they say, "I didn't do anything" or "That teacher's not telling the truth." Well, we got a camera and we know that you were upside down and you were doing something. Not necessarily to spy on the teacher. It's a resource for the teacher in order to, it takes a village, right? It's going to take the teacher to do their part and it's going to take the parents to know what their kids are doing in the classroom and we have a better understanding of what's happening.
Chris Wingate.
I agree. I think classrooms should have cameras in them. I think the beauty of Madison County is that I think teachers and students and parents would be happy with much of what goes on. There are a lot of dedicated, good teachers. But there, you know, I talk of the creeping tentacles and there are instances, I've seen it in Albemarle County for sure and I've seen it in other places where there's indoctrination going on with students with this critical race theory stuff and all kinds of this kind of new faddish things that is bad stuff. And it's a good check for a parent to say, "Hey, that's not what my students should be learning." And so I think it's great because it validates the great majority of teachers and what's going on in our schools and it's a check on those few bad actors that might be indoctrinating our children instead of teaching.
How do you propose building trust between the community parents and the school board schools? Nisha Jones.
Trust begins with communication, transparency. If we don't know, sorry, to build trust, we've got to have communication. We've got to have transparency. If we don't know what's happening in our schools and it's not transparent and we feel like we're being bombarded with new changes, we're not going to have trust. We need to communicate with each other. We need to be involved. And the pride that we have in this county, we can do it. I've seen it, I've seen it work and we just need to continue and let it sprinkle over to our schools.
Chris Wingate.
I agree with Ms. Jones. I think the communication piece is critical. I think being 100% transparent with parents is important. I think, for instance, I've been back in this county about two years and I was impressed with the surveys that have gone out and the school board has sent surveys out. That's fantastic. I think communication is critical, I think. I think building the communication through town halls. The more times you can reach out to parents who care the very most for the children and know the children best, I think the better off you'll be.
Charlie Sheed.
Let me echo Mrs. Jones and both Mr. Wingate's stance on communication. It is absolutely key. What we have right now is a problem where our parents have communicated with their concerns and their wants and with their desires off of their children and not being listened to. So, communication only works far enough as when people are actually listening to it. So, we've got to be prepared to listen to what the parents want.
How will you handle parents or community members who come up to you out in the community who have concerns or issues? How will you respond? Chris Wingate.
One of my ideas that I kind of developed is, number-one idea, is that parents are the central educator of their child. And so, I think the school board has to take very, very seriously every single parent's comments, even if you don't agree with them. And sometimes, it's easy to fall into the trap of already making a decision before the parent approaches what you want. I think that's got to be resisted. Putting them on, being willing to listen, and really taking them really, really seriously. For every parent has a different idea, and they're ultimately the boss, I think the parents are. And so, being that listening person with, backed up with the firm principals that you ran on and were either voted in or voted out on, I think it's the best foundation to lay for that sort of team building to happen.
Misha Jones.
As a school board member, I invite you to approach me as a school board member. I want to hear your concerns. I want to hear what we can do to make our school system better. I invite you to come talk to me. I like to talk, I like to listen, I like to learn something new every day. I like to problem solve. Let's work on something. Let's put our words into action to make our school system the best that we can.
Charlie Sheen.
So, I'm a mechanic, what I trade, and it's one of the things that I do is I fix stuff, equipment. There's nothing more boring than being a mechanic when something is not broken down. And obviously, if we had everything fixed right now, I wouldn't be up here doing that. But this is my forte, and that is to fix problems. And the best way to know you have a problem to fix is when people let you know they have a problem. And that communication from members in the county and parents is essential, is crucial to anyone that actually wants to fix problems, to fix issues, anything. I encourage it, whether it's by phone, or email, or text, or a letter, send them in. I love fixing problems.
Now, ready for your end comments, and we'll start with Chris Wingate.
Thanks again for this opportunity to be here. It's so fun to be back in Madison County. I've grown up here, and I've been here for a long time, and coming back, and it's always struck me how many same people, the same families appear as part of the beauty of Madison County. And so, I thank you for the opportunity to talk to y'all tonight. As I kind of sit through this forum, I have four firm principles that I promise to abide by if I'm elected. Number one is that parental rights, parental rights, parental rights, more than petty fear and threats of politicians from Richmond and Washington, D.C. Number two is we got to pick the basics of reading, writing, math, speaking well, communicating well. Much more important than the kind of political fads and partisan politics that are creeping into schools nowadays. Number three is respect the role of faith in our schools. It's not fair that people put God in a box, only picking out on Sunday morning. That's not what our faith is about, whatever faith that is. But it'll influence us in our schools. And then last, to teach America, to teach children to love America, teach children to love America. At the same time, you know, my other promise is that I'll be a team player. One beauty of what I've kind of learned, I think, in the military for a long time, is the power of teamwork and diversity in pursuing a common goal. And I promise to be a colleague like that on the school board, appreciating everybody, even those who have differences in opinions than I do, but to listen, to think together, to solve problems, and to keep Madison being a lovely place that it really is.
Misha Jones.
Well, first, I want to thank Madison Matters, the women's family and the Mad Report for hosting this event. If there's anything that I can, that I want you to take away from this, is that I'm committed to working with everyone, to working with, it doesn't matter our differences, it doesn't matter our different backgrounds. I'm committed to come up with solutions that will help our children and our teachers be successful. Your vote matters and makes a difference. Together, we will make Madison County schools even better. By working together, it not only benefits the county, but it benefits the humans that we are producing to go out of the county to represent Madison County. And people will want to come, like, "What are they doing in Madison that's working?" "I want to go check it out." I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to working with y'all.
Misha.
So, I had the opportunity to spend two years working for Caterpillar in Illinois, and kind of travel around the world working on equipment. And one of the neatest things that I encountered was everyone that found out I was from Virginia wondered why in the world I was in Illinois. And Madison is a part of the vision, and I like calling it God's country because that's what it is. I appreciate all of y'all's time out here tonight. This has been way less painful than I had anticipated. I enjoy, I enjoy all of your company out here tonight. I appreciate it if y'all will vote for me, but I understand y'all will make the best decisions y'all need to make, and it will not hurt my feelings. But I do promise you that if y'all do vote for me and I'm elected yet, that it is my goal to support the parents so that their kids get what the parents believe their kids need most.
Thanks to everyone for coming, and thank you for being so courteous.